All right, at seven o'clock, we'll call the regular city council meeting to order. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, clerk, please call the rule.
Alderman Hederland, President Schultz.
Here.
Lattaway.
Here.
Korn Cross.
Here.
Land Caster.
Here.
Foreman.
Here.
Perkins.
President.
Here.
All right, thank you. This is the public comment sheet there. So we have two individuals like to make a public comment. Dave Helme.
Hi, Dave Helme, 308 North Jefferson Street. I'm here tonight representing the Harvard Baseball League. I have most of our board of directors here with me, and I'm here simply to inform the city council on how our facility, other programs, and the public benefit from our program using the moose fields. The public regularly uses our fields, and we leave equipment out so they can do so. We leave our batting cages up year-round, even in the offseason. We leave our L-screens out for the boys to play as well. We've witnessed the Northwest Rescue ambulance drivers after a long shift. They like to go out there and hit balls around there as well. Last Tuesday, actually, we hosted the travel softball team against McHenry, and we'll be hosting their tryouts this Wednesday and Thursday as well, and possibly their entire fall ball schedule. We've absorbed T-ball, so girls are now included in our program, and we started Buddyball this last year, which is a program that allows kids with mental or physical challenges to participate in baseball. Over the last five years, we have $20,000 in materials alone that we've put into our field. Over 40 tons of dirt was placed on the fields last fall. We've replaced the two scoreboards at $5,000 each. We've reshingled and repaired the score boxes. That repair's not done either. We plan on doing quite a bit more to those, including paint. We've replaced the yellow fence toppers at over $2,000 for both fields. We regularly weed whack and spray for weeds. On the Fourth of July, we bought a new cooler unit and EVAP coil because on July 2nd it broke down. That was $7,800. We've painted the dugouts. We've painted the foul poles twice in the last five years. We've donated four benches at over $500 each, 10 garbage cans that we maintain at over $700 each. And when the city gave us money for the snack shack, which we greatly appreciated, we did it with our own labor, and we decided to do the outside of the building as well with our own money. Not only do we maintain the fields and want to make it a place that's better for the city, the taxpayers, and anybody that wants to spend time there, and we encourage people spending time there, but we also allow job opportunities for young kids entering the workforce. I believe that we're the only league in town that pays our volunteers. Field crew gets $15 a game, scorekeepers get $15 a game, Umps get $35 a game, and our snack shack employees get $10 an hour. We like to keep our registration cheap as well, under $100. Kids get socks, a shirt, pants, and hat at every level. Contrary to popular belief, we were very happy with the city's mowing efforts this year's. And actually, on July 12th, I was happy to see Dick come over and mow the fields for us just ahead of our picnic as an unasked favor, and I let him know how happy we were with his efforts this year. I didn't field any complaints, and I didn't make any either. We also have plans to revive the third field that we use for T-ball this year. We have hopes to make a grass infield with dirt baselines and have a permanent fence put up as well. Should this inform any of your decisions going forward? If somebody were to suggest that the field be leased to us, saddling us with extra responsibilities, as a group, we are opposed to that, and we just wanted you guys to be informed as to the end of the bargain that we hold up at our fields, and we're proud to do it and will continue to do it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Scott Logan.
I think my comments come under your agenda items.
Oh, you went under the agenda item. Okay, thank you. Any other public comments from the public? Calling once, twice, please come up, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jack Arnold. My address is 21743 Baroque Road. Appreciate y'all being here and just wanted to kind of jump on the coattails of Dave and talk about the Harvard Baseball League. So I'm a volunteer assistant coach on two different teams, a board member, and when I was originally asked to be a board member, I was a little apprehensive to initially say yes, because I wanted to make sure that there was going to be a positive impact made on the community. After a full year now, I'm blown away at how positive an impact the baseball league and those fields have had on the community in general. And I'm sorry, lost my train of thought here. I'm sorry, after a full year of being on the board, I'm completely blown away at the positive impact that those fields have made on the community. There's parents and families from all different walks of life over there playing baseball and having a good time, and baseball is America's sport, and I think it, from what I've heard, I'm kind of new to town, and I heard that the picnic used to be one of the biggest events that would rival Milk Days, and I just strongly feel that baseball and the community, baseball can bring a community together, and I also agree with Dave that we would be saddled with extra burden over there, and a lot of us, all of us, are donating our time on a regular basis. I'm also the owner of Arnold Electric, and I've been maintaining the electrical over there since I've been on the board. I've relabeled the panel, changed GFIs. I've got lights working outside under the pavilions to make sure that there's less vandalism at night, and I'm happy to continue to do that. And I think it would be, I think it would be a big burden for the city also if you guys started leasing it to us, because there's a lot to maintain there, and we're doing it out of our pockets with the funds that we raise, and I think we're making a positive impact on the community. So that's my two cents. Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you for your comments. Anyone else care to make a comment to city council? Hearing none, we'll move on to the administration committee meeting minutes from July 9th, 2024. Seek committee's action to approve the minutes as presented.
Make a motion to...
I'll make a motion to approve the July 9th, 2024 admin committee minutes.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Harline, second by Korn Cross. Any comments, questions here? Hearing none, clerk, call the rule.
Alderman Hederland?
Yes.
Korn Cross?
Yes.
Foreman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
All eyes on the hearing.
All right, item number five is the infrastructure committee meeting minutes from July 11th, 2024. Committee's action is request to approve the minutes as requested, as presented.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
By Foreman, second by Schultz. Any comments, questions here? Clerk, call the rule.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Lattaway?
Yes.
Foreman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
All eyes on the hearing.
All right, item six is committee and economic development, it should be the, the Community and Economic Development Committee meeting minutes of July 16th. Committee's actions requested to approve minutes as presented.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Wished by Korn Cross, second by Lancaster. Comments, questions here? Hearing none, clerk, call the rule.
Alderman Hederland?
Yes.
Land Caster?
Yes.
Foreman?
Yes.
Phelps?
Yes.
All eyes on the hearing.
Thank you. Item number seven is a consent agenda, 7A through 7Q. Is there any items on the consent agenda that city council wishes to remove from the consent agenda?
I'll bring that up on item 25.
Hearing none, I'll accept the motion to approve this consent agenda, 7A through 7Q.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items 7A through 7Q.
Second.
Wished by Harline, second by Schultz. Comments, questions here? Hearing none, clerk, call the rule.
Alderman Hederland?
Yes.
Land Caster?
Yes.
Foreman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Una?
Yes.
Hederland?
Yes.
Phelps?
Yes.
Lattaway?
Yes.
All eyes on the hearing.
All right, item number eight is dispensed with, since nothing was removed from the consent agenda. Item nine is Eric Gallagher, the assistant principal of Harvard High School, would like to recognize our SRO Officer Cohn and the police department's partnership with the high school.
Good evening. I'm Eric Gallagher, assistant principal at Harvard High School, and I have been working in administration and in schools for over 30 years, and a lot of that has been working with school resource officers, community liaisons, people who work with the, with different aspects of the community with our school and building partnerships with them. I really just, it's been on my mind for a long time to come and talk or write a letter, and I thought this might be a good opportunity just to recognize the efforts of Officer Cohn. At our school, when you're working with the school resource officer, there's a lot of responsibility for him to not only be a good representative of the community and the city, but also build relationships with, with kids and with teachers, staff members, administrators, also be a good role model for our students. Officer Cohn goes over and above on those responsibilities. I can give you a laundry list of things from the time he saved a student's life in the cafeteria not too long ago by giving them the Heimlich maneuver to assisting countless adults in our building, from parents to teachers to administrators on different things that might be troubling them or situations that they're experiencing. And on top of the personal relationships that he's built with students and parents and teachers and administrators, he also has done an outstanding job of working with the administrative team on making our building safe, which is not always an easy thing to do in a high school. The thing that has always struck me as, as important and impressive has been the way that Officer Cohn does this without raising his voice. This is going to be my third year at the high school. I've never heard the man raise his voice, not to a student, not to a parent, not to someone who's on our campus that shouldn't be on our campus. He, he does every aspect of his job with respect and does all of those things with the idea of safety. So we have begun really making some things in our school to, to keep things a little bit safer in the community. Officer Cohn is not only leading in, in that, but is also willing to give us feedback when we are doing something that he might not think is the right idea, but wants to give us the feedback to say, have you thought about this, or have you thought about that? Recently, he took our student support facilitator and myself to a meeting to better prepare our school in the event of a crisis and what other schools are doing to make buildings more safely, or to make buildings more safe. He is an incredible asset to our school. I honestly, my intention was to talk at the beginning of the meeting. I feel a little disappointed that he has to come to this meeting, but I think it's important for him also to know that, how we feel about him at Harvard High School. You would not be able to find an adult, and you probably would have a tough time finding a student that didn't have a good thing to say about Officer Cohn. Routinely, people are saying how awesome it is to have him in the building. Routinely, people are saying what a wonderful job Ed does, not only with our students, but with our staff and community members, and we're just truly grateful that he is in our building. We know that in a short amount of time, he won't be here. I hope that he is able to give the, the feedback necessary to bring in another school resource officer that, that is like him. That person absolutely will have big shoes to fill, but we know just by dealing with other officers in the community, whenever we need Harvard Police in our school, they're there, whether Ed is in the building or not. And sometimes it's just to do a check-in, or sometimes just to see if we need any assistance when Officer Cohn is out of the building. So I just really appreciate, I know it, it takes a piece away from the community when there's an officer in our high school, but I can say without a doubt that he is making an incredible impact, not only in our school, but in our community, and I just wanted to take that time to, to thank you all for supporting Officer Cohn in our building. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Yep.
And thank you, Ed. I'm sorry to, to say, you know, Ed is going to be retiring near the end of the year, or I think that's his expectation. He's certainly going to be missed, not only in the school, but on the Harvard PD as well. So we certainly appreciate his service, and we're definitely going to miss him when he finally hangs up his holster, so. All right, thank you very much, Eric. We appreciate that, and we do appreciate partnership with, with the school district, so. Okay, item number 10 is a payment of the bills. Your actions requested the approved payment of bills in the amount of $817,998.12.
I'd like to make a motion to approve payment of the bills. We need to correct the amount. The amount is $806,448.12 is the correct amount, and I believe everybody was, the council was provided with the...
That's right, there was, there was a corrected sheet.
Yep.
The correct amount's $806,498.12.
$448.12.
$448?
You didn't get the corrected correction.
Oh, I didn't get the corrected correction.
Everybody else did but you. Yeah, apparently your finance director can't edit, so.
Apparently.
So there's a correction to the correction. Sorry, Mayor.
I'm sorry, when is that total again, so I can mark it in my... $448.12.
Yes.
Thank you.
I second.
All right, motion by Harline, second by Schultz. Any other comments or questions here?
Happened in a tough book.
It was a duplicate entry, so it was voided after the report went out.
Yeah, we only bought one.
Really bought one.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, call the rule.
Alderman Land Caster?
Yes.
Foreman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Una?
Yes.
Hederland?
Yes.
Phelps?
Yes.
Lattaway?
Yes.
Korn Cross?
Yes.
Lattaway?
Yes.
Korn Cross?
Yes.
All eyes on the hearing.
Okay, thank you. Item number 11 is a petition for variation from Section 14.04, signs for, of signs for property located at 62 North Air Street. The petitioners, Zandevor Signs and Graphics Incorporated and the Harvard Community Health Partnership are requesting relief from Section 14.04B, signs for the property located at 62 North Air Street. Fee has been paid, and your actions requested to approve or deny the reading, the petition. So I should state that there was a previous variance that was approved, but they're looking to change the sign, and Eloise, if, if you could state your name and, and address for the record, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
If council has any questions.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Kelly, to your board of directors and to your staff, and to the public for having us here tonight to share information and provide any answers and clarification that you may need to CHP petition for signage or change to your signage. My name is Elise Sawyers. I also want to thank my board of directors. They live here in Harvard. Just want to give a, a big shout out to our esteemed board of directors. They're here as well, representing. My name is Elise Sawyers. I'm the chief executive officer for Community Health Partnership of Illinois. We've been in Harvard, and we're now in seven different counties, including Harvard. We've been here since 2013. We provide primary medical, dental, behavioral health. We now have a pharmacy in our building for the community as well. So in 2022, we purchased a building, 62nd North Air. We renovated, we put about $3 million in the building. The board of directors have made a decision to recognize one of our longstanding board members, Susanna P. Castro. She's been on the board for 25 years, and so we just wanted to add a little in terms of honoring her on the building. You all should have a packet on page 45, 46. You'll see where we come with respect to signage and what we will be adding. I also want to introduce our signage vendor, who can speak more to what we intend to do. His name is Mr. Steve Hodel, and he will speak more with respect to what the signage needs are. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Steve Hodel. I'm from Zandevor Signs and Graphics in Peoria, Illinois. We're the signage contractor that's proposing the, the signage that we're looking to get a variance for. There's a few reasons that we're seeking this. The, the layout of the, of the building has changed to where the primary entrance used to be on the southeast corner, where it's now on the north side. So there is a large sign there that, that constituted a, a big portion of the current square footage. It's being used as an advertisement panel now, but the, the proposed signage will kind of help direct people to the, the correct side of the building. We were cognizant of, you know, the color choices in that signage, using browns and tans to not, you know, stick out, to be noticeable, but not to look aesthetically pleasing. So it's not, you know, an eyesore with, you know, very bright signage.
Yeah, so we're here tonight just, if there's any question or concern, hoping that we may get your blessings and approval on the signage, and if there are any questions, we're also here to respond to those.
All right, thank you. Council, have any questions for petitioners?
The canopy that has the fluorescent lighting in it now, are you planning on just covering that up, or are you guys actually, or like what are you guys going to do with that?
It, it currently has signage on it now, kind of directing people to the, to the north side. We were planning to just leave it as is. I think removing it was a, was a cost consideration initially.
Yes, it would be. So the proposal is to, the CHP Susanna P. Castro, just like in the drawing? That's, that's the desired signage that we want to put up?
Are you just putting like blanks over that area where the fluorescent lighting is then? Because right now, in the photo, it's just open, so I just wanted to make sure like those aren't going to be covered up.
This is not a current photo.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, this piece here is not, is no longer here.
Actually, on page 46, you'll see exactly what is, what is there now.
48.
On your packet. So we provided a few of these packets for most, if not all of...
Oh, those packets.
Yes, so sorry.
They're looking at their, their packet from the city.
I'm so sorry. So we brought it, brought you some updated versions. So on page 45, you'll see what's on that corner currently.
Okay, so you're looking to leave the existing signage the way it is and then add the raceway signage on the side?
Absolutely. So we're just dedicating the building to this one board member and just renaming it to Susanna P. Castro.
I forgot, and I know I drive by it every day, but on the north side on the Air Street one, didn't we approve 2022 a big sign that bobs out as well? That was over the sidewalk?
Yeah, so we took...
That's, that's still there, or no? Did you guys take that off?
Uh, no, we didn't take any, but there was an original independent standing huge signage. We took that out, and we put it on the building.
On the building itself?
So to speak, yes.
So there's now another sign that bobs out on the north side anymore? Because I thought when we approved in 2022, you guys had that in there.
Yeah.
And I forgot to check.
Is this the north side?
Are you talking about the marquee sign that...
No, I was talking about the projecting sign.
The big one, I remember Raul had an issue with.
Yes, I believe that sign is still present.
Yes, the sign is still there.
Okay.
Yes.
They're, they're simply looking to add CHP Susan, Susanna P. Castro.
My little concern about that is, I get why you're doing this is to, you know, for, you know, who, right founded this health center, right? Well, she's the one that founded it and everything, and helped.
Yes.
I was wondering if we could just put it on only on one side of the building instead of having it, because now we're going to have all these signages over this building, like a big, huge advertisement. That's just my kind of concern.
Recommendation.
And I, I get, if we could put it, maybe make them a little bit smaller than what they are.
Okay.
Like especially the front one, like where the main entrance is. I definitely can see it going there, because there's not as much, not enough stuff there. But you got with a marquee that's filled out, then you got that bump out, so I just think it's going to look too much.
Okay, thank you for your recommendation.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
So the primary, the variance itself is to, is to cover the, the additional square footage that it would go over as far as the limit for the calculation for the, the elevation?
Absolutely.
I remember they're varying on one variation already when we were a couple of years ago.
Yeah, yeah, I just want to make sure, because the, the variances we did before were not due to the square footage coverage. It was, this was, this is going to blow past the norm, like how we calculate the, the elevation. I don't really have a problem with it, the way that they've got it proposed, due to the colors that they're using, because they're not going to be, if they were doing white faces where it would be a lot brighter, then I would probably be a little bit more in line to say that it should be a little bit smaller, because it's going to create a lot more glare.
My only concern is on Air Street, because that bump out's on that picture, because it wasn't done yet.
Yeah.
And so there's two, there's a lot of going on in, on Air Street.
Yeah, I mean, it, yeah, I do agree, it'll be a little busy.
So I thought maybe just propose doing on the main entrance, would have the small sign and putting the, her name on there.
I don't know if Google Maps is updated yet, but we'll see.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
There it is, yep.
So like Steve said, the signage is, it's, it's not very loud. It's, the design is gentle, and it kind of fits in with what else is happening in the community.
I think CHP's interest would be less on the sign that's on the southeast corner. Like I said, it was being utilized because it was, it was already there, but it's less desirable than would be the, the tan signage on the, to the right of that.
This sign was a temporary sign.
That's, yeah, that's coming down.
Right, yeah. Yeah, that would be, that would be removed.
That would be taken down.
Well, if you got, because you're not removing the big one either.
No, because it's more directional. It kind of tells you where to go to the front, and it was the old insurance company signage. If we take, so at one point, we wanted to take it down, but we didn't have the funding.
Understand.
So in, eventually, if we redesign that side, that will all go away.
Because I think, if I recall, the, what we approved was having the, the bump out for that sign?
Yes.
Yeah, for it to project further than...
Right, you approved the size of it. That was the variation requested.
And prior to that, that sign was a standalone, away and apart from the building. And prior to that, that sign was a standalone, away and apart from the building. It was a huge, um-
Yeah, I think it was over here somewhere.
Absolutely. Correct.
On its, on its own stage.
I mean, I think it's going to look a little busy for my taste, but I don't see it, I don't see, I don't see it being, like, obnoxious.
Approve this side, and if they ever remodel that and take down that big one, and they can throw that, come back and throw, ask for putting the sign up on the other side on Air. Because they're still going to have the name on the building in one spot. And that's the part everyone's walking into, so they're going to see it.
Yeah, I would make that motion that we approve the sign on that, what side is that? The north? Right there?
This side.
That's correct. I, because I, I see the tree is an obstacle. You're not really seeing that sign from the street. And that tree's going to be, well, eventually we'll cut it down, put another one in. But, um, I think that, you're right. If, if the change is ever made to the one side of the building, you could replace it. But, you know, yeah, I would, I would motion, I would approve the request for the sign on that side right there at the top.
This one, not this one?
That's correct. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
Just to clarify, we're talking about the side that faces the parking lot?
Main entrance side.
Is there a reason why that's on the right side of the, of the building there and not the left?
So if you look at the four-way traffic, this is the best signage, the best placement. If you're driving down 62 North, the four-way, nobody really sees the parking lot signage until you get up to the building. But you're more likely to see the other one. Is it the south side?
I think-
Yeah. The south side better than, and that is why we'd recommend putting it both places. As you drive out, you'll see the building, but as you're coming from east, west, north, south, you can see it better on the side facing the traffic.
Yeah, the, the signage on the north side is not really going to be getting the attention of drivers. I mean, the signage on the east side would-
But the purpose of the signage is to recognize this individual. You have signage already that exists on that southeast side that indicates that's the building, and that's what its purpose is. What you're wanting to do, and I applaud it, is you're, you're recognizing this individual for their effort or this organization. And that, to me, that doesn't need to be in both places. It need, it just needs to be there. That's just my opinion. Hi.
Well, and it will be on the doors.
Yeah, right. Correct. Right.
So I have a motion and a second to approve the petitioner's request to put the, the sign on the north side, the main entrance side, which faces the parking lot, and to deny the request to go on Air Street. Are there any further comments or questions? Hearing done. Clerk, call the roll.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Luna? Yes. Heatherling? Yes. Schultz?
Yes.
Lavelle?
Yes.
Frank Frost?
Yes.
Lancaster? Yes. All eyes, motion carries, will be ordered in 2024, yes, 1/18.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Item number 12. Let the record reflect that Alderman Schultz is accusing himself from the meeting. Item number 12 is relinquish of Class A liquor license. John Genasi submitted a letter relinquishing the Class A liquor license for Cal, for Cal Tippers, Front Street Tap, doing business as Front Street Tap, located at 106 East Front Street, contingent upon completion of sales to Nick June Patel, and your actions requested to approve the request.
And I see this is only if he gets, the next one gets approved.
Yes.
That's going to be my long discussion on the next one. So I'll make a motion on this one.
Second.
So I have a motion by Perkins, second by Heatherling. That motion to approve?
To approve.
To approve the relinquishment of Class A liquor license. Any other comments or questions?
Are you making that approval contingent upon the-
The letter that the current owner has put in.
Okay. Does it contingent upon the sale of item number 13?
Yeah, because it says, yeah, of approval of his liquor license. Yeah. So if he doesn't get it-
Just to be clear, the, the approval is contingent upon awarding the liquor license to the buyer.
Mayor, since there was a motion and a second, you need to make, amend the motion.
I'll amend to that.
And I amend my second.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Hearing done. Clerk, call the roll.
Yes.
Luna? Yes. Heatherling? Yes. Schultz? Lavelle?
Yes.
Frank Frost?
Yes.
Lancaster? Yes. Gorman?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
All right. Thank you. Item number 13 is a Class A liquor license application for Nickunj, Nickkunj Patel, and I'm not sure if I can pronounce this name correctly, Gunatir Arji Taraj, Harvard Incorporated, doing business as Lucky Corner Seven, has submitted an application for Class A liquor license and video gaming license. Your actions request to approve or deny the request pending submission of fees and insurance.
So my concerns is, and Dan always brings this up every time we approve these, and we usually don't have issues. The traffic stuff is fine. I get that happens to everyone. It's the dispute of payments that keeps, that keeps coming up. So if we prove it to him, and there's going to be issues when he's bringing in people to work on the building or not, there's going to be issues, it seems like, of people getting paid. The person, this owner is going to pay them, because there's a lot of disputes in here, civil. And I don't know, it doesn't say if they were awarded or not, that, in our little notes, but that's my very concern. So I would make a motion to deny it.
All right, we have a motion to deny, and a second. So, motion to deny by Perkins and seconded by Lancaster. Any other comments or questions here?
Just to clarify, with a motion to deny, if you vote yes, you're voting in favor of denying the request. It's tricky sometimes.
Is there any further information that the police department might have on this?
So the background investigation is conducted by me. As far as those investigations are concerned, it's fact finding only. I can only see what the other agencies have reported on. There's nothing else as far as follow-up or how those civil matters were resolved. I just know that they're documented as such. Don't know if I can really go into the, the content of those reports, but the report had been submitted to the mayor. But there was, there was a few things there that were noteworthy.
Normally, we don't get this. I don't, I haven't seen one of these the four or five years I've been on.
So, to be clear, every applicant is investigated. This is the first one where we've had to disclose something that we have found. Is a petitioner here, by chance? Do you care to come and state your name and address for the record, and perhaps the, the counsel has questions?
Yeah. My name is Nickkunj Patel. I live in 153 Regal Drive, Crystal Lake.
Questions for the petitioner?
Well, what's your side of the story?
We just like that location, so that's why we apply the application. I do for living bar and restaurant business. I do have in Crystal Lake, Cary, Fox River Grove, Woodstock, Licking the Hills, Carpenter's Will. So that's what I do for living. So we like, we like that particular location. We're going to remodel the whole place. We're going to make it, we're going to make it like a nice, what it needs to be, or what we stand for it, basically. And we are talking to Nextdoor. They have a lot also. So we are trying to put our food trailer over there. We do have a food trailer in Crystal Lake Restaurant. So we are bringing, we are trying to bring that over there, too. So.
Well, I was thinking more in line of the, some of the judgments that were made, you know, that were made against you, and-
Against me?
Yeah.
Well, the, the background check report showed, in addition to some traffic stops, which aren't the concern, it also shows in Fox River Grove, three civil disputes regarding not paying, you not paying contractors.
No, we don't have any of those. We don't have any awareness of those. We do build everyday construction.
So, if I may, when I do the background investigations, I look through our database, other agencies, and it has other agencies' reports. There were police reports. They were not necessarily judgments with the circuit clerk. I want to clarify that. There were reports to indicate there was a dispute over payment.
We don't know, as I said, you know, we don't have any other details. We do build everyday. We are building right now in Cary, another location, too. We are building in Minoka, too. So we don't have any details that we miss anybody's payment, or we have any dispute with those payments, you know?
To be chief, are there any open court cases on this, or is this simply police reports?
These were police reports. And again, just to clarify, these were police reports. They weren't circuit clerk reports.
Yeah, because we don't-
But they were areas of concern that I, that were of note to my final report to the council.
Yeah. We don't have anything. We did not got anything through us, basically.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Hearing done. We have a motion to deny the request for liquor application. Clerk, please call the roll. And I should just, before you make your statement, reiterate, if you vote yes, you're voting to deny. Thank you.
Yes. No.
No.
Car and Cross?
No.
Lancaster? Yes. Gorman?
No.
Perkins?
Yes.
Motion to deny is defeated, two to three.
All right. What's your pleasure, then?
I'll make a motion to approve the, the request for a Class A liquor license by Nickkunj Patel, Gunatir Raj Harvard Inc., doing business as Lucky Corner Seven.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Heatherling, a second by Gorman, to approve the application for liquor license, Class A, for Nickkunj Patel, Gunatir Raj Harvard Incorporated, doing business as Lucky Corner Seven. Any other comments or questions? Hearing done. Clerk, call the roll.
Yes. Lavelle?
Yes.
Car and Cross?
Yes.
No. Gorman?
Yes.
No.
Luna? No. This motion is approved, or adjourned?
All right. Thank you. Your, your application is approved. Item number 14. Let the record reflect that Alderman Schultz has returned to the meeting. Administration Committee Recommendation, FOP Equipment Request. Your actions request to approve the committee's recommendation to approve the request as presented.
Make a motion to approve the FOP equipment request.
I'll second.
Motion by Heatherling, second by Perkins, to approve the FOP donation request of equipment. Any other comments or questions here? Hearing done. Clerk, call the roll.
Yes. Schultz?
Yes.
Lavelle?
Yes.
Car and Cross?
Yes.
Lancaster? Yes. Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number 15 is the Administration Committee's recommendation for the VAC truck repair cost. Your actions requested to approve the committee's recommendation to continue negotiations of the $22,652.25 to fix the VAC truck and obtain a warranty. And do you have an update on that?
Yes, I have an update. After going back and talking with EJ Equipment, they agreed to drop their original quota of $22,652 down to $14,000. So they waived a significant amount away. And as far as a warranty, unfortunately, since it is an older truck, they're at least going to warranty their work for 60 days.
I'll take it. I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Car and Cross, seconded by Heatherling. Any other comments or questions here?
Since I wasn't at this meeting, unfortunately, as I would have asked in the committee meeting, even though once we get this fixed, are we looking to possibly sell this, get rid of this one, and get one that we can do? Because unfortunately, this is what happened to the fire department when they bought a bunch of stuff. Same thing, couldn't get the title, couldn't get all this stuff, had a bunch of work on a, a quint that never ran once on a call. And now they're still trying to get, and they finally got a bunch of it back, but still, we, they lost a lot of equipment because of that.
So we purchased this vehicle for $250,000. A new vehicle?
I understand the cost, but I was saying about maybe looking at another used one.
Yeah. To answer your question, then, is we are hoping to try to get at least three years or more out of it before, and that gives us time to put money away and plan for a replacement, something that better fits the work, the kind of work that we're doing now.
And, and that was the used price, the $250,000?
No, I get that, but I'm just saying, I don't think every company is, I mean, unfortunately, I did see it over at the fireside as well, but not everyone's just as bad with it. So you could possibly sell this one, and while it's still running, to someone else, and then use that money, and you might have to use others, you know, the paid off, you know, earmarked towards it, but get one that's a little bit better, that won't have all, all the issues. But I think that's something to consider down the road.
It is. It's a long-term project, but for now, our goal is to at least get it up and running, and again, give us time to put money away. We've just recently, in the last few years, started an equipment reserve plan that we can, and we're now segregating those funds to different departments. So there's a likelihood down the road, but I don't want to get Rob's hopes up too much, that we'll try to get a truck in the next year or so.
Yeah. Rob, the year before you retire.
Well, he's already one truck above Kruegerberg, so.
I, I think, too, you know, since you weren't there, there was a pretty long discussion about, there was a learning curve that we really weren't aware of, and that there were some procedures that we weren't aware of as well, and that, that had some contribution to why it failed.
Right. And moving forward on that, we're going to do better documentation when we do get new vehicles or used vehicles, but they're new to us, so that we have, we're able to defend ourselves should it ever fall apart. That was one of the issues we had with this one.
And I will say, after going through, because in, in the committee, we went through every step of the situation that was going on, and they had already kind of beat it down to the, the $22,000. So getting an almost, you know, eight, nine grand off of that, staff did a good job putting the screws to them. So that's why I'm kind of okay with just moving along.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
It was future.
Yeah, and, and I was pushing, and I was pushing for a two-year warranty on their, their work. So 60 days is a little disappointing, but since they decided to knock the money off, I'll, I'll consider it a wash.
And one thing I did forget to mention is that of the $14,000, because the vehicle is used for both public works and public utilities, our plan is to take the $14,000 split in half. So seven grand comes out of public utility, seven grand comes out of public works, since it's a shared vehicle.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions? Hearing done. Clerk, call the roll.
Yes.
Lavelle?
Yes.
Car and Cross?
Yes.
Lancaster? Yes. Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna? Yes. Heatherling? Yes.
Thank you. I have number sixteen, is the Administration Committee Recommendation Concerning Surplus Property. Your actions requested to approve the committee's recommendation to adopt the proposed ordinance declaring the property surplus.
Make a motion to, uh, prove the surplus property list.
Second.
Motion by Harline, second by Car and Cross. Comments, questions here? Hearing none, clerk, call the roll.
Yes.
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 Thank you. I have number seventeen, is the Community and Economic Development Committee's Recommendation for Proposed Tesca Associates TIF District. The committee's recommended to, uh, to move the proposed TIF to the City Council for considerations, um, uh, at the May meeting with direction for staff to bring different maps to various options, to present various options.
Is this still for them, just to start, uh, only putting down what they put into the building, the same, creating the TIF right now?
This is for the study, right?
Just a study.
That, are, and are they, are the, the folks who own the old city hall, former city hall, are they providing the funds for the study?
I'm not certain if that's been...
Yeah, initially, when we had discussed just having their property in a TIF, they agreed to pay for a portion of it, uh, but their property isn't large enough. You need at least one-point-five acres for a TIF district, so when we expanded it out to include other properties, their shared amount dwindled, so we budgeted for the full amount.
So, my understanding, because I know we got another one to discuss on the next one, um, is, hey, before our old administrator left, he said only one of our, was it five TIF districts at that time, made money. All the other ones were...
We've only had three TIF districts.
Three, okay. Oh, my, my, sorry, but only one of the three.
So, two have been completed, only one of the two was upside down, the other one was not upside down, and the current one is not upside down.
It's not upside down anymore? Okay.
Yeah, and the, the one that was upside down was the downtown one.
Was correct, that's correct.
Downtown, yes.
Was the Air Street.
All right. I'm just going off to, I remember what the old administrator...
Sure. Just want to make sure you have the proper information.
So, I mean, I know the, the maps in here, um, it's, it's really hard to figure out which businesses and properties are in, um, just from an aerial, aerial photo in the streets.
So, Mike, are we looking for approval, uh, to move forward the study as designed?
Yes, we're looking for approval to move forward to, to complete the study for the identified area on the map.
So, for instance, it looks like the post office is included, and La Rosita, um, the water tower, Angelo's, um, the parking lot at the train station.
So, on the, the map, uh, the old city hall is here, the parking lot, uh, that's adjacent to it, there's also an empty lot here, uh, this is all the metro parking, um, and then there's a grocery store, BOPS, empty lot, city lot, uh, then this goes up to the empty lots on the other side of Angelo's, uh, and going back in this direction, this is a city lot, uh, would include this area on, um, in front of the post office, that is under consideration for redoing the sidewalk and road there, so that could get included into the TIF. Not sure why we just...
But the property with the post office is also included, right?
Uh, that's currently how it's drawn.
Okay.
Um, I also had asked if we could include the, um, the alleyways, because the alleyways
desperately need some investment, and I don't see the city ever doing that unless they're included in this TIF, uh, which would be a huge boost for our businesses that utilize those alleyways.
And then what are the, what are the businesses in that finger up where you are?
This finger here?
Yeah.
These are the three empty lots. Uh, this is an oldling property that was, currently has smoke damage and has never been rebuilt, and then these are the two properties on the end. I think Akito is in one of the buildings, and the other building is Boost or Boost Mobile, and it used to be Edward Jones on the side.
Boost Mobile's up the street, Boost Mobile's not in that.
So, it was not Boost, then it's, it's...
Edward Jones was in there, I don't...
Yeah, Magnum.
Magnum.
Thank you.
So many times.
And Edward Jones was on the side here, but they vacated and moved over to the Starlight.
And then is it, I'm just looking at the businesses down on front, across from the parking lot, so that's the coffee shop, um...
So, the coffee shop...
Lozarita and Physical?
And Fiscal Therapy.
Is the barber shop included?
The barber shop, no, the alleyway between the barber shop and, um, the coffee is included, but not the barber shop. On this side, though, uh, all the businesses that are located in this block would be included.
And so have we, have we talked with all of those businesses?
I don't know the answer to that.
We have not, no.
Have we talked to the other government bodies about, like, especially the fire department, if, say, the study goes through, I know it's down the road, but we always say wait until down the road, but if it gets through and we approve a TIF, whatever these properties' values are right now, it's gonna earmark them only for that, for twenty-some years, so they won't get anything about it. The next one actually is vacant land, so I'll talk about that on the next one. Um, so that's gonna hurt those, uh, ones for that, the increase.
Well, uh, that assumes...
For the twenty-two years.
That assumes that someone's gonna build something on those empty lots that have not been built on for how long without any, uh...
And, but also the property value on these buildings, too, because if there wasn't TIF and somehow property value increased, those other bodies, government bodies, will get the increase of property tax, but for now, twenty-two years, they won't get it.
Right, it'd be frozen at the current level. Yes, that's how TIF works.
So, and I know I've talked, yeah, Lou...
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm used to sitting up there, so, um, keep in mind, too, that any TIFs have to go in front of the Joint TIF Review Board, uh, for, so that all parties, um, are aware of, of any TIFs that we're trying to do.
There, there are several steps in the process to create a TIF, so the first one is to have a study to see if it's even feasible.
And on that study, I know we budgeted, but, well, I don't remember how much you think it's gonna cost.
Uh, I think it was like twenty, fifty, okay. For the record, between thirty and fifty thousand dollars is what this is estimated to cost.
We have Pete Igozoo from Tesca Associates here, he's from Chicago, if anyone has any questions, Tesca?
My question is, is it part of what we're doing here has to do with some street repair? And how is that handled in a TIF? I mean, it's not a tax property, you know, to repair a street, so how does that get, how do you fix a street when you're doing a, a TIF? Well, the same way it was done when Air Street was originally renovated, so whatever... Oh, I wasn't here then, so... Right, so, but how a TIF essentially works is whatever increase in value happens after the TIF has been created, uh, that portion of the tax increase, that increment, is utilized to build infrastructure. So, that's how, um, the downtown was paid for. And that works with a pay-as-you-go is, is... It, it, so you would, you would have to bond out, you could do it a couple of different ways. You could bond out and pay a, um, um, pay off the, the debt from the tax that you would receive, uh, or you could pay as you go, um, and bank the money and then pay when it's available. So, there, there are a couple of ways to devise that. Uh, I don't know that we're at the stage where, um, the council, assuming that this ever goes through, uh, is ready to make any decisions on which model that you would utilize, but we certainly would recommend pay-as-you-go, because we don't want the city to be, um, overextended. Now, I will say, uh, to Matt's point, certainly the previous TIF that was in downtown Air Street was upside down, and it required, uh, because there was no real increase in value in the downtown district from the, the street escape that was created, but the bill, there was no real investment in the building, so the amount of property value did not necessarily increase, and so consequently, the city was left holding that debt service until it was paid off. The idea here is that there's areas that could get, um, in, in, uh, built on or, or renovated that would increase the value of that property, that would generate the tax increment that could pay for the infrastructure.
I mean, I would feel better about something like this if, if, if some of the businesses that are in the proposed TIF were in on this, you know, were, were, were part of it in terms of, of funding it and wanting it, um, rather than just, okay, we've drawn some lines on the map and, um, and hope we're capturing businesses that actually are gonna do something.
Can we have a hearing on this and invite businesses to attend? Um, it's up to your discretion. I think, you know, at the end of the day, the question before you today is, do you want to move forward with, uh, a study to see if it makes sense?
Just two things, real quick, for, for everyone speaking, can you, uh, bring your mics up a little bit closer? Um, it is so that we record everything, and, and I, I can barely pick up, uh, some from over on that side. So, just keep in mind, um, uh, council members, that, uh, when a TIF goes into place, it doesn't affect the business, it's just whatever increased value or the taxes, uh, will be taken off, um, and then allotted towards, uh, projects that are assigned to this TIF district. So, like BOPS, if BOPS were to go up, say, two-hundred thousand dollars in value, their taxes, they would still pay the same amount. It, it would not affect that, the TIF would not affect them. It's just that increased value, uh, when they pay their taxes, goes to the county, county cuts it off and sends it to us.
Well, and how, how do the businesses get to utilize the, um, that, uh, the TIF funds?
So, in this case, what, what we're trying to do is we've had, uh, several problem areas, um, to try to spruce up and, and the, the downtown area, and then to also increase traffic flow, uh, by making it more user-friendly. Like the, the vacant lot, there's been a few ideas. One of the buildings that we had multiple tenants, um, there, there's a potential down the road, uh, to maybe pick up that building and make it an incubator, um, the streets themselves to, to improve it, rather than using the one percent or any of our, uh, MFT, and then, uh, if you recall, it's been an issue for quite a long time, the handicap parking in front of the U.S., uh, post office. Plus, we just recently found out about the roadway there as well. So, all of that just helps improve the quality of the area, uh, to try to increase traffic flow.
But there's, there's obviously some benefit for the business, like when we're doing one that a business is requesting, and they're paying for the study, right? And so, so for instance, the, the old city hall, you know, because they're the ones that first brought this up, so how do they benefit from being in a TIF? What, what does that do for them? Because it's, it's, obviously must be some financial benefit for them.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go right ahead.
Thank you.
I can answer a lot of these questions, so. Uh, my name's Pete, I'm from Tesca Associates, uh, I've been talking with Donovan, uh, and so I gave you the proposal, uh, and yes, just to clarify, this is just to do the study. Regarding the map, you guys had a lot of questions about the map. Typically, what I would do is start big, like whatever you guys are talking about, I'll look at even more, because everything is, the boundary is ultimately would be determined by what actually qualifies.
Okay.
So, I'm not really concerned about getting every little piece that you want, we can work that out as we see what actually qualifies. As far as how does a business make money, they would have to work with the city, work out a redevelopment agreement. You would project out based on what investment they're putting in their property, how much increment that could generate, uh, with however many years are left in the TIF, and then you would work out an agreement with them as far as what eligible costs they, typically pay-as-you-go, I always recommend that, much less risk for you guys. You know, how much are they investing in? How much increment is that gonna generate? And then what would you agree to reimburse? What of those expenses would you agree to reimburse them for? And you'd have to work that out through a redevelopment agreement.
Because I know we've, we approved the, is it the inducement?
We did inducement for, um, for this...
For city hall?
For the, the old city hall, correct.
Old city hall, okay. And so they're keeping track of expenses that may be eligible if there is a TIF?
Indeed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for...
I make a motion that we move forward with this study.
All right, we have a motion by Schultz, second by Car and Cross, to approve the, um, recommendation for proposed study by Tesca Associates. Any other comments, questions?
And we had already budgeted for that?
Yes. Hearing no other comments, clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 No.
Luna?
No.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lovelace?
No.
Motion is approved, five to three.
All right, thank you. I have number eighteen, uh, the Community and Economic Development Committee Recommendation Proposed South Division Street TIF District. Your actions requested to approve the committee's recommendation to adopt the resolution to induce the redevelopment of property, commonly known as twelve zero one to twelve ninety-nine South Division Street. Uh, just to reiterate, this is, uh, basically, um, creating a inducement resolution to allow, um, if a TIF actually does form there, that the property owner can start, um, basically collecting his receipts for what may be approved eligible expenses in the future.
Mike, can you show the map of that?
Sure.
Uh, for those that weren't at the meeting, the, the property that, that got this going was the, uh, uh, Old Sullivan's Grocery Store.
So...
That property, that entire strip mall there.
This property.
So, my, that's more than an acre and a half, right? The property that the Sullivan's is on? And that's all they need is an acre and a half? That's absolutely more than an acre and a half of land, please someone. So, why wouldn't the TIF simply be, they're the ones requesting it, why wouldn't it just be their property? And then they, all the cost associated, because here's my concern with making a TIF larger than that. Right now, we're, from what I'm hearing from Donovan, and what I, what I've kind of garnered from Lou and everything, we have a lot of interest in our community. So, if someone were to come in and develop that property next to Dairy Queen, and it's in the TIF, we're gonna see no tax benefits from it for twenty-two years, you know? So, why, why would we want to restrict ourselves now? The people that own the Sullivan's property have this very specific thing that they want to do, they want to make it easier for one of their potential leases to be able to go into that property. That's great, then let them eat the entire cost of it, in my opinion.
They bought the whole Sullivan's Company Corporation.
So, they, they can pay for the study, they can, that, that's just my opinion.
Exactly.
So...
And my, uh, my concern is with TIFs is meant for blighted areas, and with all these vacant lots that are owned by, some of them farm land, they're not blighted areas at all. They're just not developed, because that's not, they didn't sell to someone to develop, but they're not, it's not hurting, just because it looks empty going down fourteen doesn't mean it's blighted.
So, um, just to answer some of the questions, um, what you want to do typically, if you're gonna go into a TIF, because it, you're locking in funds or taxes for, uh, quite some time, is you want to try to make the TIF work for you. Um, in this case, is to try to alleviate some projects, uh, we have, uh, driving in from Route fourteen, it's, it's unsightly. So, part of this is to try to fix up that, the, the overall view. Uh, if you recall, to the north there, the old dump, um, what we'd like to try to do is, is make that, uh, habitable to be able to sell. Right now, we've had several int, uh, interests, uh, there, including some grocery stores, uh, just in that lot alone, but because of the soil conditions, they, they will not come here. So, again, you want to try to make your TIF work for you and try to take care of... TIF work for you and try to take care of these problem projects.
Has the new owners of Sullivan's, have you guys talked to them about those other grocery stores for that building?
Donovan can speak.
I know the old owners didn't want to do anything with it, because they didn't want competition from Ringo.
Yeah, the owner of the property is AWG, they're a conglomerate of several grocery stores. They do not want to put a grocery store in here, they have interest from other tenants.
You can't say exactly yet?
Yeah, unfortunately.
Well, I'll use an example since I've been here. That lot to the north, the one that I was briefly talking about, there has been, and Aldi's has been interested in going there, but after they do core samples, they don't want to go there. And Aldi's wants to go close to a Walmart. That is like one of their core business functions. And so, again, trying to make the TIF work for us, we can maybe fix that lot so that it is now usable for a business.
Lou, that would be on us. Now we're paying for it, you know, and with no guarantee return. I mean, you might as well just do a, you know, I don't know, I just, you know, everything that you're saying, though, would be, would not be based on landowners building something there, it'd be on us fixing it before the landowner could build something.
Right, but right now, that lot alone cannot be, has had no interest because of the issues with it.
But we don't own it.
You're right, we don't own it.
Yes, so, I understand why we're responsible, you know, especially using taxpayer money to fix it up so somebody can own it.
So, one of the things that we can do with it is acquire land, and then we can acquire that land to fix the land so that now it's now usable.
I agree with Jay, I think that this needs to be a very specific TIF.
Well, the map is, I'm just making the general point to begin with, the map is not decided at this point. We're just at the point where they can, they're asking for them to be able to track their costs. So, if we do do a TIF, right, that's where we're at, Mike, correct?
That's correct, so...
So, the map is down the road, but yeah, Charlie?
The matter before the council is to approve or disor, deny a resolution to allow this business to start maintaining their receipts for eligible costs in the future should a TIF be approved.
Just to clarify, in addition, like, improving, approving this resolution, there's still subject to, A, a TIF even being created. If a TIF is created, it's still subject to a redevelopment agreement being entered into with the property owner. So literally, at this point, the approval is allowing them to track expenses that they may, in the future, be able to seek reimbursement for. You're not committing yourself to signing a redevelopment agreement, to reimbursing them any expenses, it's literally just to allow this property, the property owners, to track their expenses should down the row a TIF in some format or some shape be approved, there's the potential for redevelopment agreement, and then they'd have expenses to say, hey, we want reimbursement for these, and we can negotiate that back and forth.
And is it, is it just that property that can do that, or is it any property that's in that?
The resolution before you is just this property.
And this...
Today, you should ask for inducement, too, for Jay's lanes.
The study, the cost of the study is reimbursable as well. So, on the first TIF, the city would be reimbursed out of the TIF for the cost of the study for Tuscan, and whether the city does this one or the private owner, they can be reimbursed for the cost of that study.
Well, we're not asking for approval to do a study right now, we're just...
Just the inducement resolution.
Right. So I make a motion that we approve an inducement revolution, a resolution, not revolution. Hold on, let's step back. What a revolution, okay. Yes, for this proposed TIF district. That's my motion.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Schultz, second by Carncross, to approve the inducement resolution for this proposed TIF district. Any comments, further comments or questions?
More than like, just really quick, more than likely, the next phase with this would go through community development, so when we get that onto our agenda, we'll make sure everybody knows, and if there's, if you have concerns, then we can address that and try to zero in this map more, be a lot more strategic with it. I do agree with you, we need to be strategic, but we need to take advantage of what we can, so, that was it.
All right. Any other comments? Hearing none, clerk, call the rule.
Alderman, Lancaster?
Yes.
Formers?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luter?
Yes.
Catterly?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Alderman?
Yes.
Thank you. I am number 19, is the Community and Economic Development Committee recommendation for UDO text amendments. Your actions requested to approve the committee's recommendation to refer various UDO text amendments to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Carncross, second by Lancaster. Any comments, questions?
Yes. During the committee meeting, the recommended UDO changes were approved. Then after they were approved, the things on monotony were added. In other words, well, they were, Lisa showed disappointment in the fact that it wasn't on the agenda and that she thought that they were, that staff was working on it, and...
Alderman, but those were already pre-approved to come to council by the Community and Economic Development Committee.
They were what?
That item for monotony was approved by the Community and Economic Development Committee in a previous meeting to come to council. So it was combined with the items that were sent to council from the last meeting.
To clarify, the meeting that community development had when we reviewed the new, the update to the building code, the monotony, the monotony provisions were reviewed at that time with those, and we approved both simultaneously to go through. So we're, or anti-monotony, I'm sorry, clarify, anti-monotony. We're not approving it, monotony, we're saying anti. So, anyway, both of those were reviewed during the meeting, I forget which date, but it was the meeting we had when we did the building codes, both were approved. The building codes have gone through, the anti-monotony provisions would still need to come to city council for us to approve, that's the only, we're the only ones that haven't approved it yet.
Does that answer your questions, sir?
Yeah, yeah, I guess. So we're approving that part, then, too? Is that when I got all of it?
Yes, so, all of the UDO text amendment recommendations have been combined for you to approve to send to Planning and Zoning.
I do have two questions. One, on the section 83G and H, 83H3, the 15 minimum transparency, I saw for the committee one, had something about, you still had to have something on the street side, you know, just not the 15%, but you still need that. On this section on here in the agenda thing, I don't see that anymore. Is that still gonna be there, where the street, you could still have something, so it's not gonna be a blank wall on the street sides?
Yes, we're leaving that section in, so it's not included.
All right, and that's what I just saw in the committee thing, it had that, so I didn't see it on here. My second question is, maybe I'm reading this wrong, for the R4 district, where it was 8,712 square feet, you want to reduce it to 4356, and it says for two-family dwelling stadiums, the minimum lot size. So is that for, like, the one, say if it's a duplex, the one-sided duplex has to be 4356, or to put the whole duplex, the minimum lot size, 4,356 square feet?
The entire lot will have to be a minimum of 8,712 square feet.
Okay, so when I'm reading this, maybe that's why I'm thinking you're reducing that down to 4356.
Well, it's defined in the UDO for a two-family dwelling that it would fit on a standard-sized lot of 8,712 square feet, but in the table, it says for each dwelling unit, a minimum of 6,000 square feet, which would be 12,000 square feet, 4,000 a bit less than what it's defined as. So, we just want to have the table match the definition, and instead of a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet per dwelling, have, make it half of what the definition says, 8,712, or 4,356 square feet per dwelling. So for a duplex, two dwellings, each need to have a minimum of 4,356 for a total of 8,712 square feet.
Well, just clarifying, because it's for the voting, that's the only reason why I want, so for, each duplex has to have that, which comes up to the 8,712, right? Okay, not just the whole building, beyond the 43, okay, just want to make sure. Thank you. So we're approving this to go to...
Zone board.
To the zoning, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yeah, for further discussion by them.
Right, and at that point, they will make their recommendation one way or the other, and then it will come back to this body for you to make final decisions.
Okay, I, you know, I just, this is the first, that meeting was the first time I've seen this, so I guess I'll go to that meeting and give my two cents there, because, you know, there's some things in there that I don't agree with. One of them is the changing of the 15% facade window, or glass, or whatever it is, from 15 to, what is it, to 5?
No less.
No less than 5.
Yeah.
I can't find any, anywhere on the internet where it's not 15. I mean, that's recommended by architects and everybody. Plus, there's another, just for example, there's another requirement that every room has to have a window that is 15% of the floor space. And there's an egress requirement as well. And I just tried, I just made some hand drawings, you know, on a graph, piece of graph paper, and you wouldn't, you couldn't hit the 5% if you tried. I mean, you know, in other words, you can't get it that small because of the other requirements, you know, including egress.
Can I suggest, then, that, it's over here, that you meet with Donovan and then bring all of those concerns, both to Donovan and the Planning and Zoning?
Oh, yeah, I do plan to do that, but I'm just telling you why I'm gonna vote no. Because I...
Just to clarify, all you're doing right now is allowing the petition to amend the UDO to be set to Planning and Zoning.
Right, right.
At Planning and Zoning, they can mark it up as much as they want. When it comes back to you, it could be night and day different, and when you get it, you can mark it up. Essentially, this is just giving the permission to go ahead to consider these UDO amendments.
Yeah, you're right, I'm sorry. That's, I guess I could vote, yes, without clarification. Educate some of the people, too.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, clerk, call the rule.
Alderman, Morgan?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luter?
Yes.
Catterly?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lavelle?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Alderman?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Alderman?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Alderman?
Yes.
Alderman?
All right, thank you. I am number 20, is the Infrastructure Committee recommendation for SURF internet blanket permit. Your actions requested to approve the committee's recommendation for SURF internet, to submit a draft contract for the city council's review.
So, you saw this on, like, before you, before this meeting started, we just got this at about 4 o'clock today, so I'm just asking that this be tabled to the next meeting, and to give everyone, including our legal, time to review.
Motion to table.
Second.
Just, the motion to table, open-ended, preference would be if we're gonna just continue, like, if we want to hear it at the, what are we, in July? If we want to hear it at the August meeting or the September meeting, my suggestion would be to motion to continue it to a date certain, so it's not just out there.
Yeah, so whatever the, motion to continue to the next meeting. Then, I amend my motion to continue to the next meeting, which is August, what are we looking at, 27th?
Well, it wouldn't hurt to put this into the Infrastructure Committee before, because...
Yeah, yeah.
So that they...
Can I get a second, though?
I'll second, Dan.
Lori has to, Lori seconded, so she has to amend.
You accept my amendment?
I accept the amendment, and I second it.
Okay, so you are tabling this issue for the city council's August regular city council meeting. That has been the motion, the second by Schultz and Lancaster. I thought I heard, though, you were interested in sending it back to committee for review. So do you prefer to do that?
You know, we probably don't need to do that, we can just do that. I don't think we, you know, that way it is on the agenda for the...
Then, then, yes, I recommend you put it on the agenda and then it'll come back to council next August.
Right. Just for clarification...
All right, I withdraw my motion. I motioned that we send this to the administration committee for review, or for the, to the Infrastructure Committee for review. How's that?
I'll withdraw my second.
Yeah, just, yeah. Does that work, TJ?
It works.
Whatever you'd like to do.
Yeah, let's do that.
Whatever your pleasure is.
Because either way, the committee can ultimately recommend that it be on the next council meeting.
Right.
Okay, we now have a motion by Schultz, I'm sorry, you've removed your motion, did you make a new motion?
Yes, I did.
And then I'll second your new motion.
Okay, so to be sure I'm clear, we now have a motion on the floor by Schultz, second by Lancaster, to send this issue to, back to the Infrastructure...
Infrastructure Committee, yes. Meeting in August, yeah.
Any other comments?
Would this mean that in the August meeting, it would be probable that we could review the recommendation from the committee, but also review the blanket or consolidated permit at the same time?
Possible. I would leave that up to staff, whether they could have it done in time.
Yeah, the only reason I'm making that recommendation is just that, the end of August, we're gonna run out of time, but they...
Ideally, if we can get it done, it would, both will come to you at that time.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the rule.
Alderman, Perkins?
Yes.
Luter?
Yes.
Catterly?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Alderman?
Yes.
Alderman?
Okay, thank you. I am number 21, is the Infrastructure Committee's recommendation for sidewalk program. Your actions requested to approve the committee's recommendation to refer a budget amendment to the Administration Committee regarding the sidewalk program.
I've got a question about the sidewalk program. It said that it was focused on areas with minimum engineering costs, so that basically there's no sidewalk there? Is that the correct understanding, that that's the kind of areas we want to target?
I think the answer is, minimum engineering means that it's pretty flat and doesn't require a huge amount of drawings and surveys and things like that. Donovan, is that how you would interpret that? I'm sorry, Rob. I'm looking at Rob and I said, Tom.
Yes, and in this case, it's, they're generally flat areas, the only cost might be associated is a survey for those areas that do not have a sidewalk currently, just to make sure we're in the boundaries.
So then, now I could be mistaken here, but instead of focusing it solely on Milky Way, is it possible to get other areas where they might be more necessary, where it's being utilized by the public more?
This was just, so, this was just to add a sidewalk to, so the Milky Way Park Plan that we're working on for a grant, would put a walking path all the way through to that entrance, is it Ratliff?
No, it's a...
It's Beaumont.
Yeah.
So, the actual road that leads off Ratliff into Milky Way Park is actually called Beaumont. So, that little section of Beaumont, before you hit city property, is where we want to add a sidewalk, because if you, if you recall, the overall master plan for, or master design for the Ozland, will have a trail that goes from the west end all the way across along the bottom, and then back up to connect to that sidewalk. So then, we actually pair the, everything together.
Okay, so then, I think I might have been mistaken, because it felt like most of
But I don't think you're confused at all, because that, there was a map that had quite a bit of sidewalk over there, but we made a change in that. Because, I mean, this thing is, really doesn't tell the whole picture of what happened at that meeting, and it's accurate, but just to give some background as quickly as I can, the rejuvenation work that we've been doing, turns out cannot be paid for by MFT funds. The state won't pay it. So that meant that we were going to, the original plan was to, okay, if we can't do it with that money, we can't do it, and then move the money we're going, we were going to use for rejuvenation into skip patching, okay? Which raised the amount of skip patching we can do. The sidewalk program was ninety-five thousand dollars, I believe, maybe around that.
That's correct.
And the, it turns out that that's not MFT money. So the committee decided to send sixty thousand dollars of that sidewalk work to cover rejuvenation, which is very important to our program going forward. We want to be able to finish the rejuvenation portion of the, what we promised to do last year. So that's why this is being moved to the admin committee, because it's changing funds from general fund to, well, I was saying in the general fund, but it's going to a different application.
Right, you're reallocating it to a different...
And so that, and that's what's really happening here. So the amount of sidewalk that's going in near Milky Way is much smaller than what you originally saw in the, in the other, in the old plan. And, and, so, and then, and that's, that's part, part to do with what's happening on the number twenty-two as well, but, so what you're voting on is the ability for us to do that, to move that sixty thousand dollars from sidewalks to, into rejuvenation, so we can complete that.
Well, actually, what we're doing is sending that issue to the, to the admin committee to make that budget amendment.
Well, and plus, plus, we're not exactly sure what we're doing with sidewalks with regards to who's paying for what.
Yeah, that's a different...
We're trying to figure that out, too, before we jump into it.
Yeah, but, yeah, we're trying to come up with a more comprehensive sidewalk plan for next year's budget.
Hopefully, that one percent sales tax will help us out a lot with this, so we can do both.
We'll see, we'll see, okay. That's, I just wanted to make an explanation here with...
So with the rejuvenation next year, we could use that one percent sales tax?
I don't think we're going to need any rejuvenation.
We've reached the limits of where...
So we couldn't, after we finish this year, okay?
Yeah, we'll have to start paving to get roads to be rejuvenated.
Just rejuvenate everything. Do we have a motion in a second?
We do not.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Perkins, second by Hatterline, to refer the issue to the Administration Committee for a budget amendment.
We have a correction to that referral, to take out engineering, based on Alderman Schultz's motion at the infrastructure meeting, and the misinformation presented.
I have that somewhere.
There should be a MO in the package.
Yeah, the five thousand dollars is not needed for engineering.
So the engineering that was a part of this is already budgeted, so that piece doesn't, yeah, that piece doesn't need to be done.
So we need to reallocate that five thousand either to sidewalks or roads, and then recommend it to Administration for a budget amendment.
So we could do sixty-five towards rejuvenation and thirty towards sidewalks.
I say we put it into more skip patching.
The five thousand?
Yeah. Because that's, I mean, you can probably actually find a patch somewhere that...
It'll be tough.
Just so that we have it correct for you in a second.
Do we need to change our amendment, amend our motions for that, then?
Was it a motion?
There was a motion to send this to the Assembly Committee.
Yes.
So we need you to...
The corrections.
I'll amend my second.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So reiterate, we now have a motion in a second to, one, correct the amount that we're going to send back to the admin committee for a budget amendment, sixty-five thousand towards road rejuvenation, thirty thousand towards sidewalks, and the five thousand has already been covered for engineering costs, so that's not, no longer required.
Right, and that, that's going to skip, the skip patching.
My apologies, yes. Sixty thousand for road rejuvenation, five thousand more towards skip patching, and thirty thousand to Ratsla sidewalks. Is the motion in a second. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk call a roll.
Yes.
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 All right, thank you. I am twenty-two, is the Infrastructure Committee Recommendation for MFT Road Program. Your actions request to approve the committee's recommendation to remove Third Street from the 2024 MFT Road Program.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Schultz, second by Lavelle, any comments or questions here?
Is that just a matter of the cost and the budget?
No.
Oh, okay.
It's, actually, it's to, because we can, the skip patching that was planned for that is better used somewhere else, because this road is so bad that it really needs to be redone.
Okay, so don't waste the money on skip patching, because we got to...
Right. Essentially, you would, it still needs to be rebuilt, so you would waste the money to tear it back up to rebuild it versus spending it somewhere else where it would be utilized for longer periods.
Although that's how the state does it.
It is, we will, we will continue to patch as necessary internally, and sort of, we will be doing maintenance patches here and there, easing transitions into driveways, however, that it's tough on Third Street to figure out where to stop.
This is specifically Third Street from Northfield to Blaine.
Correct.
Just so I'm aware.
Yeah, yes.
Part of Third Street we're talking about.
Which I'm sure you've driven on once or twice.
I live on it. So, yeah, I'm going to hear about it when I get home.
All right, we have a motion in a second, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk call a roll.
Yes.
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 Fortunately, yes.
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 Perkins.
Thank you. I am twenty-three, is the Parks and Recreation Board Recommendation concerning Ozland Grant. The board recommends a concept plan for Milky Way Park to the City Council for Phase One, which includes a pickleball court, accessible playground, two soccer fields for children aged ten years and under, one adult soccer field, pedestrian walking path, adult fitness area, two half-court basketball courts, a shelter. Your actions requested to approve or deny the board's recommendation.
When do we expect to have a budget?
I would suspect shortly after this has been approved.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Schultz, second by Carncross, any other comments or questions here? Hearing none, clerk call a roll.
Yes.
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 Thank you. I am number twenty-four, is the Parks and Recreation Board Recommendation for a Sam's Club card. Your actions requested to approve the board's recommendation to authorize the use of the Sam's Club credit card for purchasing concession items with a credit limit set at two thousand dollars.
Make a motion to approve the Sam's Club, authorize the use of the Sam's Club card.
Second.
Pushed by Hatterline, second by Schultz, any other comments or questions here? Hearing none, clerk call a roll.
Yes.
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 Thank you. I am number twenty-five, is the Tree Board Recommendation. Your actions requested to approve the Tree Board's recommendation to adopt the proposed ordinance amending Section 5.06 Tree Board, Section 20.07 City Fees and Charges, miscellaneous fees, and Section 11.04 nuisances, public nuisances regarding tree, plant, lawn, and weed control.
I'll make a motion to approve the Tree Board's recommended ordinance changes.
Second.
Motion by Hatterline, second by Schultz, sorry. Comments or questions here?
Is this adding that twenty-five dollars permit fee?
Yes.
What's the reason for that? Because for garage sales, we don't have a fee for that, and I thought we want trees planted in this community.
I'll allow our Public Works Director or Superintendent to answer that for you.
The, the idea behind that is that for garage sale permits, other than processing the permit, there's no staff time involved, but with trees, there will be staff time involved with reviewing the permit, selecting the site, making sure that the tree's the correct tree for it, be, there be overhead lines, too close to the right-of-way, things like that.
Requires staff to actually go to the site.
So it helps when they do the Julie, you guys do the Julie part, pretty much.
I mean, Julie's always free, but...
You guys do the Julie part as well.
Yep.
Because they don't do the waterway you guys do. But it's in part of Julie.
Yeah, so we locate for storm, sewer, and sanitary, and water, but this is just to cover any staff time that's associated with basically reviewing the permit and making the selection.
Who, who is responsible for trimming trees in the parkway?
City staff, Public Works.
That's the right-of-way, so from the sidewalk to the street?
Correct.
So, once this gets approved, I can have them out there and do mine, because I need trimming?
Oh, I think you can request that.
Maintenance, so...
Because if I trim it, I can get a fine.
Maintenance, maintenance of the right-of-way, maintenance of the right-of-way is on, you know, the same as grass, maintenance of right-of-way is an extension of the property owner, however, we will step in in instances of hazard trees or any sort of issues.
All right, because I just saw in the minutes about the question, you guys didn't understand how that would go, was about if someone, like, say, I decide to trim my tree, if I'm going to get fined, because I trimmed it up.
Well, it's if you, if you trim it in such a way as to damage the tree.
Prune to harm.
Yeah, prune to harm, so as long as you're just pruning the tree...
So lower branches, that's, I don't, if I, so I don't have to keep ducking with my push mower, I can do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
The, you have to get a perm, permit to trim your own tree in the parkway?
No.
It's just a plant.
No.
Just a plant or remove?
Plant or remove.
Yes.
Plant or remove.
And to clarify, this is only in the parkway area, it's not...
Right, not on private property.
Because that's going to be the first, that's going to be the first question people get confused on.
And if the tree dies, that's usually when the city will come in and remove the dead tree. Question, if the tree dies, and the tree is totally gone, but then a sapling comes up from that same, like, base tree, are you then going to have to, like, pay like a twenty-five dollar, like, permit fee for that? For the sapling? Yeah. Or is it just safe, because it was actually like a little remnant of the tree? If you didn't, if you didn't plant it, I mean, it's, it's like part of the tree.
I would assume that it's just...
I'm just checking, I don't want to, like...
As Alderwoman Hatterline...
Killed its baby.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend, I wouldn't recommend leaving a, like a, like a sucker that come up from a root, like a stump, to be left anyway, that's going to be a poor tree.
Please remember you're reviewing whether, these amendments to the ordinance.
I understand, I was just clarifying from my vote.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk call a roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Did we ask, was, I thought there was somebody here that wanted to do a, a...
Not for this.
Oh, not for this one?
Can I get a clarification on something?
State your name for the record, Will.
Will Parker, nine oh eight, Joanne Lane. Just this twenty-five dollar tree per, permit fee, so that's just for the right-of-way on the other side of the sidewalk next to the street?
Between the sidewalk and the street.
Perfect.
And then, any, on the other side of the sidewalk is private property, you do not require a permit.
That's all you need to know, thank you.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries, ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash one twenty-one.
All right, thank you. I am number twenty-six, non-elected Parks and Recreation Board members, your actions requested to determine whether to amend Section 5.04B Parks and Recreation Board Appointment and Qualifications Regarding a At-Large Citizens, and I know we have a petitioner which is to make a comment. Scott?
I just wanted to see what the council was going to decide. This came to the Parks, went to the admin committee, when Alderwoman Hatterline basically said it's a problem for non-elected members, came to the city council, went back to the Parks Board, no decision was made there, now it's back here, and I still haven't heard a reason why it's a problem.
So, so may I address this?
Of course.
Okay, so I found this section in the book, on page, I think it's one hundred and two, and then I called Ruth Schlossberg, who's one of the authors, and, and spoke with her today, and asked her, since she has been in the last couple iterations of the book, because they update it every four years, she's been the primary author, and explained the situation to her, and she said, she said, "Oh, I think I'm going to take that out in the next version, when we redo the next version." Upon her thinking about the issue, she, she doesn't see it as a problem, so, yeah.
Okay. Just to kind of expand on that, the, the section referenced in there talks about if, if authority is delegated to that committee, that would essentially be beyond the power that, that can be delegated, and I think, and all, at least in this instance, that's not happening, so I think that's why it's, it's not a concern. I think the one concern that we talked about before was just the potential that they're not elected, right, so they're not, someone could argue that they don't have, you know, the, I don't want to say fear, but like, you know, working for constituents.
Accountability, accountability to the residents, yes. Kind of like the Tree Board. All volunteer.
Yeah, yes.
How can we, do we need to do an actual vote, then? Or can we just kill it?
You don't need to do anything, it's, this is just brought to you for consideration.
So we can kill it, and... What's the terminology you can do to kill it?
If there's no, if there's no motion, there's no motion, so there's no business.
You know, it did, it did get me to think, because the mayor, you, you mentioned that one of the problems is, is it, it can leverage power, because you choose the members of that board.
Indeed.
And it got me to thinking, well, what are the alternatives? And, and one of the things I came up with, it's just an idea, is that perhaps each ward could have a person that is selected by, or nominated, let's say, by the two alder persons in that ward to sit on, on the park board. That way, you would not have that leverage as a mayor, and, and then that could be renewed each year, your renomination, if they, they want to change the person or nominate somebody different and so on. It's just, it's just a thought, something to bounce around as an alternative to get public participation in the, in the park board, and solve the issue that you were talking about.
I like that idea, actually, so, it'd be up to council whether you want to make those changes or not, but, yes.
And what, when I talked to Ruth about that issue of the mayor being able to, to stack the deck, so to speak, she said, "Well, any appointments that are made are approved by the council."
That is true.
So it's not a unilateral appointment.
But it would be nice if each ward had representation on that.
Yeah, other than, other than the elected of representatives.
To your point, each... To your point, each ward is represented by an elected official.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Any other commish questions here? I don't feel like I see a motion coming this way, so. Alright then, we will move on to I am number twenty-seven. Award bid to furnish and deliver rock salt, your actions requested award the bid to the low bidder, Compass Minerals out of Orlin Park, Kansas, at seventy dollars and sixty-five cents a ton.
I'll make that motion approve.
Second.
Motion by Perkins, second by Schultz. Any commish questions here? Here none, clerk, call a roll.
Uh, yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Harrelline? Yes.
Yes.
Lavelle?
Yep.
Carr Cross?
Yes.
Yes.
All eyes on motion carries.
Thank you. I am number twenty-eight is a proposed ordinance electric aggregation program. Your actions requested to adopt the proposed ordinance authorizing renewal of the aggregation program for electric load. Now, this time around for this aggregation was rather disappointing in terms of the offers that we did receive on the open market. And it was in your packet, talks about three recommendations that we did receive, or three choices that we had. One choice was essentially, the lowest bidder was higher than ComEd's current rate. And you could lock that in for a year or two year, two years. But the rate is higher than the current rate at ComEd. So you're, if you approved it, I think it was at seven point two cents, was that right?
Yeah.
So at seven point two versus six point nine five, which is the current rate. So you would be saying to our community, "Hey, you're gonna pay a higher rate than ComEd is right now," anticipating that ComEd will raise their rate above seven point two during that two-year period, and then the community residents would be protected for the, what would then be a lower rate. But there's no guarantee of that. So that was one choice. The second choice was, we could just maintain the open market rate and what that rate is. And part of the, the energy that we would buy would be from green energy, up to five percent of the aggregate of the energy that would be given to the community would be from green energy. And we could tout that we are a green energy city. There are some slight advantages to that in that certain community or economic development, companies might value that the city is a green city and, you know, consider coming to Harvard because of that. That is about the only real benefit that we would get from that, other than the fact that we would be a certified green city and part of our energy would come from green resources. The third option that was given actually gave us basically at the same price point as the second option. However, we would get a rebate to the city, not to two taxpayers or to residents, but to the city in the amount of ten thousand dollars per, for the two years, a total of twenty thousand. So ten thousand each year. My recommendation would be the green energy, simply because to accept the twenty thousand, I am certain that certain residents would consider that the city is selling out our residents by taking the twenty thousand. However, after sleeping on it, I did ask that staff put this, the, the three choices together for your review, because what, if we were to accept that third option where we would get basically ten thousand, two years in a row, we could utilize that money to offset some expenses specifically in our parks department. So one of the things that, you know, I've always been concerned about when something like this might come, is it would go into the general fund and then it would get, you know, the general comments are, "Well, it goes in there and disappears." If we earmarked it for something that everybody would benefit from, so it's not just businesses, it's not just a certain criteria or a certain segment of our community, the parks department serves our entire community. And the one area that we really need some help in is a, a software to be able to do this programming that we're trying to get going within our community. That would be much easier for our staff to manage, easier for residents to sign up, and it, it wholly integrates with our current system that we use for water billing and all the other things. So our enterprise system would seamlessly, seamlessly work together with this software. There is a cost to that software. There's an initial cost to purchase and then there's an annual cost to maintain it. If we were to accept and move to that route, if council decided we wanted to go that route, we believe we would have enough funding from this to do the software for at least three years, which then would allow us to get the programming up enough so that it becomes self-sustaining to pay for that software in the future. We are not budgeted to be able to purchase this as software this year. This would give us an opportunity to actually implement something in this fiscal year if you decided to vote that way. So I leave this at your feet to decide which of the three options you feel is best for our community. And I believe the ordinance that was submitted was for the, for the green energy option. But we can have, if you decide to go one of the other options, I would recommend making the motion to approve contingent on changing the ordinance for the option that you decide is best for the community. Are there any questions?
I would just like to say that, you know, the aggregation, you're right, it's a little upside down right now. But it's, it was originally put in and has paid off in the past when catastrophes happen. You know, like an oil embargo or something like that, and all of a sudden they gotta buy electricity from somewhere else and, or they gotta start making it with natural gas in the, you know, in the substations. And the price goes up like crazy, your price doesn't change. So there, it's like an insurance policy, sort of.
Like hedging your bets, essentially, yes.
And, and so you, you, we would know that for, for the next two years, we're gonna be at seven point two cents or whatever it is. You know, and, and that's not that far over six point nine that it's gonna kill anybody, I hope. But that's the reason for it. So when you think about this stuff, you have to think in those terms, because if you did go with it, this twenty thousand dollar deal or the green deal.
You're, you're subject to market price.
You're, you're subject to, you know, those volatile situations. It's less noticeable in electricity than it is in gas. I mean, the gas is the one that kills me. I wish they'd come out with an aggregation for that, because that is very volatile. And you can, you've seen it in your bills, you know, you, hey, it wasn't that cold, you know, and all of a sudden you're, you're paying, you know, four hundred dollars or?
I like it in the summertime because it's cheap. I wonder why.
Yeah. But my, my point is, is that that, everyone should realize that. It kind of makes, kind of pushes me towards just doing the aggregation. But maybe I'll roll the dice with you, I don't know.
I, I, I'm leaving that, you know, that there are three plans to consider, and so, you know, which one do you think, I mean, it's, it's a little bit of a gamble from that perspective. If there is an increase in energy costs, you would be capped at seven point two cents if you took that deal for two years. It's, you know, and will ComEd raise their, you know, electric rates in, within that two-year period? The chances are probably.
They got denied downstate with stuff.
So, so our current, so our, what we're currently, what are we currently locked in at?
Uh, I'm not certain what the current rate is through our current supplier.
Yeah, we did one year last year.
It looks like it's six point nine five cents.
It's, it's like six point nine or six point, it's between six point nine zero and six point nine five.
Okay.
I don't have that number and I can look it up and send it to you.
And, and ComEd's current rate is six point nine five?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry, if I read this correctly, the current program provides a fixed rate of six point nine five.
Okay.
Based on what's written here.
Okay, but do we know what ComEd's, I mean, it says here in the memo that, okay, the current locked-in rate is six point nine five and the new locked-in rate would be seven point two. Do we know what the current ComEd rate is?
So if there was some confusion, the current ComEd rate is six point nine five.
Okay.
I apologize for not having it in the memo as far as what our current locked-in price is. But the projected, or the renewal is seven point two.
Okay, but we don't know what our current rate is, what our current locked-in rate is.
Correct, that's what I believe is six point nine zero to six point nine five.
Okay.
And that rate will end in October, so you have to do something.
And the, the reason why you're discussing it now is because you have, if there is any kind of change, we need to be able to notify the residents and, and not have mailings overlap or, and that causes confusion.
Anybody got an electric bill on them? I might. Still do paper. I'm not gonna go. We should just vote on something, right?
When, we started the aggregation program when I was on city council back in twelve, eleven, something like that. And I know one thing that I double-checked every time we went through it, I don't see it in your program here, but I don't see the whole contract, is besides the opt-out for residents, a termination without, without charge clause. Back then, if, if an individual opted in or didn't opt out, and then decided he wanted to go back to ComEd or want to go somewhere else, he could cancel and there'd be no charge. Is that?
That's still true, yes.
Okay. The other thing is, I like the ten thousand going to the city, whether it's the parks or whoever it is, because that's another ten or twenty thousand dollars that the city doesn't have to spend from something else. My thought. Thank you.
Thank you for the input. What's your pleasure, council?
Should we flip? I'll, I'll motion to approve the aggregate program ordinance, minding that we change it to the third option, including the rebate program.
So that's option A, which is item number two on the memo?
That's with the ten thousand dollar per year rebate.
This will fluctuate with ComEd's rate. We won't be locked in for residents.
And this is for how long that we won't be locked in?
Two years.
Years.
Two years, starting in October.
So presuming we don't end up in World War III.
Yeah.
In the next twenty-four months, we'll be alright.
So we have a motion in a second to price match program, option A, which matches the market rate, but grants the city ten thousand dollar per year of the agreement. Any other comments or questions here?
I'm gonna do what Charlie Ujus says. And the reason why I'm gonna vote no on this is I'm more want to make sure for residents, they have a locked-in rate, because I have a feeling something's gonna change in the next year with what's been going on. So I think we should win with the locked-in rate.
I bet I read, you bet I'm black, we'll see where it ends up.
Any other commish questions? Here none, clerk, please call a roll.
No.
Luna?
Yes.
Harrelline?
No.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lavelle?
Yes.
Carr Cross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
No.
Porter?
Um, no.
Oh.
Oh!
Oh, we have a tie!
This is a historic moment.
Never, I've never witnessed this.
Just so you know, the mayor's never voted, as, since I have been mayor.
Yeah.
I'm gonna vote yes.
I'm gonna make another motion now, that that money be allocated to the software for the parks pro, parks department.
I'll second.
A motion by Schultz, second by Carr Cross, to allocate the funding from ComEd to go to the parks department for parks program software.
Software, yes.
Is it gonna be, it's not gonna be that much, is it? Or do we know?
It'll be a little.
Go ahead, Stacy. So it's prorated for this year. And so then, it's, it comes out to sixty-eight hundred dollars a year renewal. With the twenty thousand dollars, we project it will at least pay for the software for the next three years, with a little bit left over.
Oh, right. Any other commish questions? Hearing none, clerk, call a roll.
Yes.
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 Lavelle?
Yes.
Carr Cross?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Didn't think that would be the issue that I would get to vote.
You could have just done this.
I, I guess so, I could just. I think I wanted a, a blowback that you guys can stand with me, at least those that voted for it, right? Alright, I am number twenty-nine is just, I asked the clerk to add this agenda item to all future city council meetings, just so that we have this to discuss the strategic vision review. At the moment, each, each of the committees have been going through the strategic vision as relative to their, to each committee and the action items that are before them. So I don't know that we have any, really anything to discuss this evening, because there's still a couple things that the committees are still working on. But I wanted to make sure that we park this in our agenda each month so that we don't lose track of it. But is there any comments or questions about that? Alright, hearing none, we'll move on to department head reports. And I'm gonna start on this.
Okay, so good news. One of the abandoned houses that I was trying to get possession of, we obtained the deed to that for three oh seven grant last week. It's not in bad shape. I mean, it's not great, but it's not terrible, it's not a tear down. So have to move forward on decisions on what you want to do with that. Aside that, my report's submitted.
Thank you. I imagine that'll come to your committee for disposition, for consideration for disposition.
Report is submitted.
Thank you, Jim. How the, how the, the tower, can you give us a quick overview of the tower maintenance?
The, the contractor reached out to me and they're having a little problem with a tower that they're working on. But they're projecting to be here on August twelfth now, so he will keep me updated as, as we go.
Okay. And part of, for council, part of the city parking lot there across from St. Joe's will be kind of blocked off, closed one, when this maintenance starts.
Correct.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
You're welcome.
Donovan?
Nothing further for this evening, sir.
Alright, Ra?
Report is submitted. Other than that, flood service line information's out there, so those of you talking to your neighbors, let them know. The links are live on the website. We need all the information we can get. And I'll finish with some exciting news, is tomorrow, hopefully, unless there's any sort of plane strains and automobiles type events, John Bartel and I are on our way to pick up our first new big plow truck since two thousand eight. So with, with all good stuff going, we will have that here at the next meeting for your viewing.
Like right here?
If you want me to drive it into the building, I'll do whatever you want.
Oh, man, asshole night out.
Uh, yes, we should be able to take it to that.
Alright, thank you. Stacy?
First thing, thank you, everyone. Not only will that software make my job easier, but more importantly, that'll make it so much easier for the entire community to get involved in our programs and to register, because right now it's very cumbersome and it's multi-step. So this will just be like a one-stop shop and they can, it's just gonna be so much easier, so I really appreciate all of that. We do have some new programs going on, including at the pool. So we have a mixology class at Rush Creek Distilling, which is, we just announced it yesterday and I already have a few people signed up, so I think that's gonna be pretty popular. We're doing the dog foam party at the dog park that the mayor suggested, so that will be super fun. We're also continuing dance classes, so the fall sessions will start in September. At the pool, we are gonna have a teacher appreciation. gonna have a teacher appreciation day on August 7th, so teachers will get in free with their school ID. Um, and the last day of the season is August 10th. It's a Saturday. And the very last hour of that day is gonna be pups in the pool. So the last hour is gonna be for dogs to come and swim in the pool with their owner. So that will be really fun. Um, all of that information will be posted on our Facebook page and on the city website, at the pool, at city hall, in all, in all the ways that we have right now. Other than that, report is submitted.
Can you give us a brief overview of, of the pool and how, um, cause we were closed for a few days and, and that maintenance has been fixed, but maybe, I know it's, it's a little technical, but if, if you could just give a brief overview of what we accomplished.
I don't wanna jinx it. I don't wanna talk about it. Um, so we had the chlorinators cleaned and repaired. Uh, so those are up and running now. We also had a company from like Geneva come in called Pool Blue. Um, and they got both motors running and explained to me, uh, exactly how things were kind of adjusted over time that made things work too hard and work against each other. Um, so now it is, it's like a hands-off situation back there. Like, don't touch anything. It's been running. Uh, so that's where we're at with that.
All right, thank you. Deputy chief?
Report submitted. Uh, Chief Baumann can't be here tonight, tending to some family issues. Um, I have nothing else.
All right. Uh, we'll go to committee reports then. Dan?
Assuming we'll have to schedule a committee development meeting to cover more than likely several things that are gonna come up.
Hey, Dan?
Yeah.
Before, before you go of setting a date, um, you know, with, with this policy of anything that has to do with the budget having to go back to the admin, um, this, this is gonna cost us a month on every issue we come up with, unless the admin meeting is the last meeting, you know, before the city council meeting.
That is a good point.
And I, I recommend that we consider that, that, that the other committee meetings go ahead of admin, because it's usually the other way around.
That's fine with me.
And, um...
I think it's a, a good idea.
And, and the second part of that is, is that we make these dates kind of a, a permanent, you know, something day within...
I, I, I would concur with that also. For instance, the parks always meets, um, like the third Monday of the month. And, uh, and the reason I say that is then staff can be better prepared when they come to the committees. There's always the same day or week of the month. Um, and then it would also give them time to be prepared for whatever comes out of those committee meetings to bring to the full council, so...
Not to mention if they wanna dance.
Yeah.
Right.
Fair enough.
So that, on the staff, uh, we, we do request that, that the committee set a day in time similar to the parks board. It, it helps us as well as far as, uh, planning activities, not just personal activities, but, um, park or, or, uh, lineup for experts to come in. We know this is the date it's gonna happen.
And, uh, for parks and other, um, entities that might utilize this room, uh, if we know there's a standard date that, you know, the room is not available versus these other dates that they would be, it would make programming for the parks department much easier to juggle around the other meetings that were utilized.
I'm not avail, I am not available, um, from the first to the ninth. I can do the 12th, 13th, 14th, but...
Week is the 12th?
That's Monday.
I don't have my phone. I left it at home, so I don't...
Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday. Any, any, one of those days will be okay.
Right now, we have Parks, uh, a dance program that's on Wednesdays. So if we can avoid Wednesdays altogether, that...
Tuesday the 13th. You wanna do that?
Yeah, let's do that.
Does that work? Community Development, Tuesday 13th?
Oh, I don't know. For me, I'm not, maybe.
So my, my recommendation is you, you figure out whatever month, day of the week, and it'd be similar, if you can make it, you make it. If not, then, you know, um, hopefully there's enough that can make a quorum, right?
I mean, I'm okay with, most of the day, most of the time Tuesdays aren't a problem for me. So if we're trying to do Tu, like, you know, the second Tuesday of the month or whatever it is.
Yeah, second Tuesday of the month.
Would be.
So, and in this case, that would be August 13th.
Yeah, well, let's, let's aim for the second Tuesday of the month for going forward, but we'll stick to the 13th. It's usually around the time we end up doing them anyway.
Time?
Uh, 6:30.
Okay. Any other comments?
No. Sorry.
John?
Um, I'm good, mayor.
Okay. Your meeting is always the same, so...
I got my meeting set up. It's on the 19th.
Your meeting's gonna be at the pool house, John?
Yes, it will be this, this next one.
Sweet. Yep. That's, uh, 8:13. Okay. And at 6:30, is it 6?
Let's do it 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock. Okay. Jay?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Nothing tonight. Lisa?
Um, yeah, I guess we need to pick a date for the admin. Used to be the third or the second Wednesday of the month. Um, I would've, but now I'm hearing that Wednesday's not good, right?
You're blocking half a day is ahead of the city council meeting, like whatever you're...
Right. Um, okay, so we've got, the third Monday is Parks. I have a TLC committee on the second or on the third Tuesday of every month. Um, so it could be Thursday. It's too late. What's it?
It's too late for council.
Yeah, too late for council. So it could be the, could be the second Thurs, or the, oh, the third Thursday, actually.
So the 15th?
15th. Could be the third Thursday. Unless the, well, but it's...
That's gonna run into the months that are shorter. We're still a day before packets are due.
Right.
Do we have to meet in here if we choose a Wednesday? Can we meet over there?
No, we, there's no requirement to meet in here, no.
Yeah. We just wouldn't be televised.
You just, you just wouldn't have it recorded.
Darn.
Or do you want, or do you want Charlie to schedule, or does that use him?
Pinching us back.
Well, yeah, Charlie, when do you...
So you gotta go last.
When's infrastructure?
Well, you, would you, would you pick the third Thursday? Is that what you picked?
That's what I propose.
For this month.
Well, that makes...
For this month, but it may not help in, in other months.
Well, the...
If, if it's the, if the third Thursday, if the next Tuesday is the fourth.
Yeah, for example, Thursday, the 19th of September, the packets are due to be published the next day. That's just not enough time for council.
So would Parks be willing to move up a week?
Why we can't go back the way we were doing it and then meet over there if we can really have dance here for the rest of the year?
Yeah.
It's the second Wednesday.
Just do it the second Wednesday.
But unfortunately, this August, I can't do the second Wednesday. Last month, I could've done it, but then you guys changed on me when I was not here for the June city council, which I would've...
We're picking on you, man.
So, yeah. And I, and Charlie said, I think Charlie really wants me off, the city council, because he's the one that brought up this plan, so...
So would it be, would it be, would it be possible just to at least set, uh, dates for August and then have the committees discuss a set date?
Yeah, we could do that. Or we could have staff come up with proposals.
Just do, just do the 15th, do the 15th, do the 15th for the next month, for August, for admin. And then we'll figure out a permanent date after that. Cause you, you're available the 15th, right?
Yes.
Okay, there, perfect. Admin the 15th.
15th for infrastructure? Or what'll be on?
Admin.
Admin, admin.
Oh, I thought we were done with that.
Admin's on August 15th. So now we're...
Infrastructure's gonna have to be on the 12th because he's not available on the 14th.
Do we have to defer infrastructure?
That's gonna be a fun week.
Does there need to be an infrastructure meeting next month?
Yeah, we gotta talk about the wireless next.
That's it, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
I'm surprised we don't.
I haven't given my report yet.
I got some ideas from the sidewalk program, too, we need to talk about.
Yeah, we're not, too, Charlie, but...
I do the 12th. You do the 12th?
I can do the 12th.
You do the 12th?
Oh, we, oh, we're actually going, oh, I thought Charlie's leading this one on.
No.
Okay. Yes.
Charlie, 12th?
12th, yep.
All right. That's a busy week. Sorry, guys.
Okay, where's our Lori?
Hi, bud.
So Lori, if I can ask you and Jeanette to make a note in each of the committee agendas to discuss a set day and time.
Okay. Lisa, did you have anything else?
No.
Rosa?
No, I don't have anything.
All right. Matt?
No.
Charlie?
Okay. Matt, when would you like to have the, uh, infrastructure?
We're talking about it when we, in the committee, because we got it for this month, for next month, I mean. We, we just did it.
The 12th.
What?
The 12th, August 12th.
It's late.
Monday.
I thought that was the...
Admin.
Oh, that's the Thursday.
I already put in the calendar, Charlie, did.
Well, I thought I was on the right page and then you told me I wasn't, now I'm not.
No, so, no, admin on the Monday. Community, community development, no, yeah, right, right, right. I'm all, infrastructure Monday, community development Tuesday.
Where are we to move?
12th.
And you'll correct me if I don't.
Okay, good, fine.
Sorry, Charlie.
12th. Very good. All right.
Aye?
Now, my report. Um, no, I just wanna say that in our, in our committee meeting, whenever we have it, uh, we, I'm gonna try to introduce like an outline of ideas for sidewalks long-term on, on top of, um...
Listen, I got some ideas, too.
Okay. Yeah, I know, you've had some discussion.
Practice, not.
Um, and then also, um, I think we wanna work on, uh, you know, some vision, uh, project tracking ideas, too, with using perhaps some kind of project management staff software. Something cheaper, you know, inexpensive at least, and that we can kinda keep track of where we are so that the, when the milestones come up, we know about them. So I, you know, and then, and then thirdly, to discuss the, um...
Wireless.
What?
Wireless.
Yeah, the wireless thing, if they show up. So, yeah. That's what we'll do.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
All right. Lori?
No.
Okay. Treasures report?
No.
Attorneys?
No report, ma'am.
Administrators report.
Can I do it? Can I do it? No report.
Clerks report.
Offcoming meeting dates. If this is not correct, well, no.
Let's do it.
You're on, Charlie.
Six, planning and zoning is canceled due to a lack of agenda items.
They have an agenda item.
That does not, the numbers have come from the publisher. Yeah, because we have to have 15 days to publish it.
You almost stuck him with it.
Tree board meets the 7th at 6:30 PM. Infrastructure meets Monday, the 12th at 6:30 PM. Community and economic development meets Tuesday, the 13th at 6:30 PM. Administration committee meets Thursday, the 15th at 6:30 PM. Park board meets the 19th at 6:00 PM, and this will be at the pool house. Next regular city council meeting is the 27th at 7:00.
That's what I have. Anybody have anything different?
And then I do have one other thing. I did put in your folders tonight, dates that were provided by the, um, state of Illinois election board, um, consolidated election. The filing period and the circulation period is going to begin August 20th as opposed to previous election cycles. It has been in September.
Like mid, mid, late.
And then, and then the first date is actually submit your petitions is gonna be November 12th. Last day will be November 18th. Previous, previous cycles, it's been closer to Christmas. So it's a little, they moved it up about 20 days.
Know the percentage yet?
No, not yet. Candidate packets will be available either in the office or on the website on the 20th. We haven't figured out the signature requirements, maybe we will. We'll just...
All right, thank you. Uh, for the mayor's report tonight, I just wanna state a couple things. One, I'm not sure if you know that the Chamber of Commerce is seeking a new, um, community, um, executive director for that organization. So if you know someone that's interested in that or, uh, could, uh, qualify for such thing, you may, uh, ask them to apply. Um, also, I want to give a huge thank you to all of our staff, um, for all the things that they do. Uh, I, 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 I know that we, we have a lot of moving parts within, uh, our organization. We have a lot of new people, but I really feel like we have, uh, are coming together and working together as a team and, uh, we're accomplishing a lot of good things in each of the departments. So thank you for our staff. Um, I'm excited to see what's happening within our parks department. And, um, I definitely want to reiterate, uh, for our public works, the, um, lead line replacement program. So if you're listening and you have an older home, please, uh, this is posted on our, on our, um, Facebook page, both the public works, the city, I think it's been shared all over. Um, we really need the community's input in terms of surveys for what is happening within their properties, especially their much older properties, um, because we will be applying for grant funding to be able to help pay for this. Uh, it's gonna be very, very expensive to do this project, but it's, um, being mandated and we're trying to get ahead of this as soon, as fast as we can to get, get out in front of it and find funding to help pay for this because those properties that are affected, depending upon where the water service is, if the, if the main is on, across the street or on your side of the street, could be anywhere from $10,000 to $20,000 just to replace that service line. So it's gonna be very costly, um, and we wanna try and get, uh, grant funding to pay for this. So please do your due diligence and, uh, if you don't, our public works will be contacting you at some point because we do need that data. And that's all I had tonight. Except the motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second. Clerk, call the rule.
All votes in favor?
Aye.
All votes in against?
Thank you, good night.